All right, so now being shortly after 6 o'clock, we're back in open session for the Monday, March 12th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. During the executive session held earlier this evening, the Board voted unanimously to not reappoint Fire Chief Warren Bressari beyond June 30th, 2018. The Board has also voted to place Chief Bressari on administrative leave effective immediately. A press release will be disseminated following completion of tonight's meeting. So that's the announcement. We've got Tara coming in at 6:30 to give us an update on general code, Plimpton bylaws. Are we moving to the police station contract documents?
Yeah, which I don't think we have yet, and so we'll put it on next week's agenda.
Okay. So we've got Brian Wick coming in at 6:40, you said, to talk about the draft of the earth removal bylaws. MRI report status, we need to take a vote to accept the report provided by MRI. So I'll make a motion that the town accepts the report submitted by MRI.
Second.
Do you have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Appointments within Fire Department.
So I moved that the Board vote to appoint Albert Beardsley as Fire Administrator with Group One responsibilities to serve the town and Plimpton Fire Department on a temporary basis and to endorse a memorandum of agreement that sets forth the terms of Mr. Beardsley temporary employment.
All right, I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have a document which is the employment agreement as a copy for...
Pardon me?
What does that give him for powers?
He will be the acting interim chief, Fire Chief.
And what gives him that?
Because we're appointing him.
But what gives him that background? He has to have the background.
Oh, he does. He is a retired Fire Chief, and I don't have his...
I'm a retired Fire Chief.
Okay.
What does that give him? What is his background?
Do you want to talk about his background, Mark?
We have his resume here from 2008 through 2015. He was chief the department of the town of Georgetown. He has been an assistant, a coordinator, and senior instructor since 2003 at the Department of Fire Services, MFA. From 2010 until present, he's been an adjunct professor at the Bunker Hill Community College.
So where's his fire background then? I didn't hear anything about a fire background. I'll put my resume up and it says any day of the week.
He's the chief right there of the department of the Georgetown Fire Department.
You can't appoint anybody chief. You have to have the qualifications to be a chief in the state of Massachusetts, which I do, and no one has ever approached me.
So your question is where does he live now? Was this posted? No.
No, it was not posted. This is interim. This is an interim chief.
Interim or not, you should have gone to the highest ranking officer, which is me, and asked me what my background for that does or... I'll blow him out of the water any day of the week.
Why does it have to be...
And if you're going to get rid of my chief, which I stand behind 100 percent.
One at a time, please.
Okay? I need a reason why.
How did you find this individual?
Let's go one question at a time. So you're upset that we didn't come to you and offer you the interim chief position?
I've worked with these guys. These are the finest people I've ever worked with, and you're basically hand-grating the whole department. To what end? Especially what we've just accomplished in the last six months, which you people probably have no idea. All you're here to do is to bash my chief, which I'm not going to stand for that.
We're not bashing your chief.
What is this interim thing? Why, what precipitated an interim thing? What was the reasoning behind it? What's wrong with Chief Bressari?
We're moving in a different direction.
What direction is that? What's the direction?
One at a time, please.
What's the direction, ma'am?
The direction is we're going to be exploring shared services.
Okay. You want me to speak on that?
Why do you have to remove the chief?
No, I would like my chief.
Okay.
I've been doing this for roughly 20 years. I have lived through that, okay? I'm going to tell you right up now, and I'll mark my words. A town next to me out in New York tried that. They almost went bankrupt because everybody puts nice pretty numbers out, Halifax included. And first of all, let me just tell you, that chief's not even staying around, so I don't even know why you would want to deal with somebody that's not going to stay around. And then he just hired someone that I fired and the chief fired from here for stealing. So do you want somebody like that to go out and running your department? In which you guys know the person, and you guys collaborated with him, he was going back and forth, and you guys let it go on, and then he's trying to steal from my department, which is ultimately your department? Is that the type of person you want?
So, Chairman, if this is the case, I'm familiar with that individual resigning.
He did not resign. I fired him before he resigned.
He was not fired.
He was. I relieved him of command, and I fired him.
If you recall, I gave you an opinion that an attempted termination in the manner in which it was conducted violated the civil rights of the individual who was entitled to notice and handle it.
Are you kidding me? This is a joke. It's a casual joke.
Do you want me to follow this file? I gave him...
Do you want me to pull up the Constitution?
Go ahead. I followed it. I followed that by law.
So scaling's part of the Constitution?
You did not follow the process.
Show me how.
And you should not be discussing the individual's reputation in the way in which you're discussing it.
Well, you're discussing the chief's reputation.
You're not following that chief.
I don't recall anybody discussing the chief's reputation.
Then I'm renewing his contract.
Then I'm renewing his five fifty's on administrative leave. That is putting it out there. This whole thing is not...
You don't run another direction. Why not let him go and finish his term?
Pat, can I have a quick second?
Go ahead.
You took $20,000 from the budget last year to have a totally bogus study done for this department leaning towards the direction you wanted to go. You wasted $20,000 of my money, because I'm a taxpayer, and you paid for him for the last year. Why can't you just come out and say it? That's what I'd really like to know. Where does this guy, this interim chief, live right now?
The interim chief is...
Again, Dan, you're in a public session.
Okay.
And the address is...
We don't want the address. Is he living in town or...
No, he does not live in town. He does not live in town.
So if there's an urgency within the town, you're going to trust some guy that's got to come thousands of miles away? That's really stepping up there.
What is the cost involved in all this? If it's regional location, why is it that all of a sudden it's going to be Halifax and not Chief Bressari? Chief Bressari and his department, as well as Pat Dillon's Department of Public Safety, is very important to the residents of this town. And frankly, when you want my esteem, you're not. I think this should be in a town meeting vote.
Absolutely.
I do, too. Somebody who understands safety, I agree. I have nothing but high accolades for Public Safety and Fire Department.
Get back to the chief that you're appointing here. I still haven't heard his background. I'll give you my background, and you already have my background. I have every class that is needed to be a chief of a department. I have every class that is needed to be a state fire instructor, which I am in, in three states. And I teach at the fire academy. So where does he compare to me, other than he's been made chief? So if you're going to bash my chief and get rid of him, you should at least put someone in place that knows what the hell they're doing.
How did you come to this? How did you make this pact? Where did this individual come from? How was this individual...
How was this process done? I was never...
No, you weren't. You weren't consulted. That's correct.
What was any of my other topics?
How did you learn of this individual?
Through a consultant.
What consultant?
The one that paid $20,000 to Savage County.
What consultant?
Folks, I'd like to make a couple comments.
What consultant?
I answered the question.
You said a consultant.
MRI, the consultants that helped us with the study.
Is MRI going to do the study?
The man who asked me three questions, being the highest ranking officer other than the chief of the department, he asked me three oddball questions which made no sense other than that he wanted to close us down and make us part of Halifax. So is it or is it not true? You're already having your answer of what you want to do. You didn't mean to spend $20,000 and do a study.
This whole study was a pretext, wasn't it?
No, it was not a pretext.
It absolutely wasn't.
No, it wasn't.
You had your mind made up that we're going to merge with Halifax since day one. We've been hearing rumors the chief wasn't going to get his job from an individual that was fired by this department as far back as October.
Well, that was just a vicious rumor, because that was not true.
But it turned out to be true, didn't it?
You've got your hand up back there?
My name is Troy Kudrow. I'm a member of the Plimpton Fire Department. I have two quick questions and a comment. Was the notice of executive session posted on the conspicuous location inside this building?
Yes, and it was on the town's website, too.
All right. Second, 28 years in service in the fire service, as I know you went to executive session, what you said, you chose to go another direction. That being said, dynamics of the fire department are very particular in its many years of service and working in a good group. You chose to pick someone outside the agency to run the fire department who's coming in pretty much blindly to understand the day-to-day operations, the geography of the fire department, which I personally can say from being in the service for the time that I have, I don't think is the wisest choice. I'd like to make a motion to the Board that Phil currently be promoted or temporarily interim Fire Chief until the Board decides to which direction they want to go to and keep the continuity of the fire department. You're leaning on very particular grounds in, I think the department has come a long ways in the last six months in continuity amongst the gentlemen here, which is hugely important on fire ground. You can't have a good active work on fire ground without cohesion of your members. And what they're doing right now is teeming on breaking up this group, which I don't think is the best choice to make. So my motion is to have Phil put in that position interim until the Board decides on which avenue to go to.
Well, I think that's a very good suggestion, and we'll consider it, but I'm not ready to make a motion right now.
So when did you begin looking for this new chief?
Pardon me?
When did you begin looking for this interim chief? You have to vote on my motion.
I don't have to vote on your motion. You're not a member of this Board.
Sir, I think you made some very...
Are you going to turn?
Yes, sir.
My motion was made in public forum. They have to vote.
That's not true, sir.
It is true.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I attest your decision, and I'll have that in writing for the Board to remember.
Okay, thank you.
So when did you begin looking for this new chief? The interim chief?
The town administrator made contact with MRI in advance of this meeting. We didn't know what the voter of the Board was going to be, and it was...
Come on. I'm a very black and white person, sir.
Can I interrupt you?
Boy, you did.
Not right now. So not knowing what the Board was going to be, I advised the town administrator due diligence would be to contact MRI to see what potentials were up there.
Okay, so when was that contact made with this? When did that process begin?
Within the last week, sir.
Okay. And so within the last week this individual is contacted? I didn't make contact. Who made contact with this individual?
MRI, the consultant.
So everything's been done through MRI?
Okay.
And hold on.
Okay.
And is MRI charging for this?
No.
Or is this part of the package?
No, they're not charging for this.
They're not charging for this. Are we going to employ MRI for any further studies?
We'll put it out to bid. Because there is going to be a Phase Two of this study where we're going to look for a cost analysis of keeping things the same and different levels of shared services with Halifax.
Can I ask a question? Hold on. When you do this other study, with all due respect, and I'm not going to tick anybody off, but if you're going to do real hot fact numbers, not the numbers that MRI did, because those are totally bogus, is what other better word to choose from. If you do that, I can guarantee you, I will give you a fire department with the chief that no one can beat, for decent money. What you're doing right now, and you guys have been doing it forever, and the chief is not the best he could do with what he's had, but you guys are lacking in like three state codes that you're not doing. And he's told you about it, and you guys have done nothing about it. These guys don't get annual physicals, they get them elsewhere. That's your responsibility. They don't get annual face fits. That's your responsibility. I get all this because I work for a company that demands it. So are you going to do hot fact numbers, real numbers?
Real numbers. I want real numbers. I want to know exactly what this is going to cost.
Well, are we going to be involved in...
No, this wasn't involved. All it was, was...
Well, that was the first two words on this gentleman's...
Was looking at the current operations and giving us an assessment of current operations, and then making a recommendation about a road path, a road path for the future. And they're recommending exploring shared services. There's no commitment here. We're exploring. We need to find a financially viable, long-term solution. Yes.
You have to see our point. I have a chief that lives three doors down from me, okay, from Halifax. Every other day I'm getting comments from him. He's taking over. He's doing this. He's putting Mr. Heat as freaking chief and this and that. I don't see where this isn't already a done deal, because he, from what he tells me, if you guys on a weekly basis...
I've been hearing this for two years. Is it true or is it not?
Yeah, absolutely.
Go ahead.
Okay. Let me back up a couple steps here, and I recognize everyone's...
A little upset. But I'm still in...
No, my turn. We recognize everyone's very upset, and I hope you guys recognize how upset we are, how challenging this process has been. Every step... Sir, it's my turn. Why don't you sit down for a moment, please? I'm sorry to say that. It just, I... We were faced with a situation, ultimately, we are faced with the well-being of the citizens of this town, and as you guys are. We were faced with knowing the chief's contract was going to be up in three months. If we were not going to renew it, we had to do it this month. That's what the contract says. We had no choice on that. We wrestled with this big time, came to the regretful conclusion that it was time to move on, that this wasn't working out, that we were facing challenges that we just weren't meeting. Having made that decision, it made most sense to put the chief on administrative leave. We went ahead and found an interim chief to come in. Let's underline and bold that, an interim chief while we buy some time to figure this out. Now, let me just continue for a minute. MRI has given us a bunch of suggestions. They are things that we certainly want to look at. It feels like a roadmap to move forward. We have been talking for a long time about possibly shared service. The MRI report offers some other options as well, and in moving forward this way, as challenging it has all been, it gives all of us time to begin to consider this and hopefully consider it over the next weeks and months in a thoughtful way, and particularly when things settle down. This totally sucks for everybody in this room, and we get it, and it probably totally sucks most for the chief, and we get that. I think, I'll speak for myself, but everyone at this table, we totally admire him, we fully acknowledge...
Why not those citizens?
And appreciate what he's done over the time. It was with very considered advice that we were advised that the best way to go was to put him on administrative leave. It isn't what we wanted to do, but that we felt we needed to do.
Why didn't you renew his contract, number one? What was the advice that you got, considered advice that you got, number one? Put the town at risk.
By doing that, honestly, I have to say, because I don't know if you know firemen or if you've been around firemen, but I've been around, I'm the third generation in my family, okay? I have a father that got killed in a fire. I got a brother that got killed in a fire. They loved their job. Now, you have a tight knit group here. Does any one of these guys, you can ask them, would they follow me anywhere? Yes. Now, you come and bring another guy in here who has no credentials that you've told me about, other than he's been a chief. I've been a chief, too. I'm retired as a deputy chief. What does that mean? Nothing. You've got to have some paper behind it, and you've got to have some experience behind it. And I'm totally insulted that you didn't even come to see one of the other chiefs.
It made much more sense to put an interim chief in place...
It doesn't.
While we look at these options. You have put forth a possibility that is worth exploring, and over the weeks...
I talk to these guys every day. They have my back, I have theirs. This guy coming in, who is he? I don't trust him. If you're not going to have my chief, which I would go through hell for, why would you put someone in there that I don't trust and doesn't have my credentials? I busted my ass to get educated and to get experience in this fire service. And there's no one in this, probably in this state that could compare to my freaking background. And I'll put my credentials up against anybody. Halifax, anyone.
Okay, Phil. All right, one at a time. We had people raising their hands. Go ahead, sir.
So I've been a firefighter for 10 years in two different states of the fire department. I've been around the block. What this comes down to is people's lives at the end of the day. The citizens' lives and our lives. If you go into that burning building, I've had a lot of friends hurt, my captain and his family members hurt. So I'm curious of what was the vetting for this gentleman who you've selected? Because when we asked the questions previously, you guys were sitting over the resume looking for answers. We contacted a week ago. On the fire ground, we have to trust our chief to keep us alive and to rescue whatever citizens we have to get. So it's, everything else aside, with upset, and this can be better and that can be better, at the end of the day, I want to go home to my wife and not die in a fire. I can tell you for a fact that we've grown as a department. Under chief, we all trust him, and especially the captain. We have a command staff that we feel as if we're coming home with the end of our tours. You know, we're not Boston or Proctor, it doesn't matter. Fire doesn't change from what department comes through that door. So I would like to know, the vetting process and what went into actually finding out that this guy is going to keep your citizens safe and your firefighters alive at the end of the day? So I'm just curious, this whole process, besides advice and what...
Okay. Can I get your name?
Sean Gunnarman.
Sean, okay. Thank you, Sean. Okay. Sir, you had your hand up?
Gary Sonro.
Gary.
I'm going to put this to you right now, what we have coming to this town tonight and tomorrow morning. We're not going to have a Fire Chief to run the town. What do you want us to do?
Do you have any question, Ensign? What was the vetting process? The hiring process for this gentleman?
Well, the vetting process was done through the consultant, MRI.
Okay, so the consulting company recommended him, and you took the consulting company's recommendation. Does that sound fair as a process?
That is fair. That is fair. Keep in mind, this is an interim at-will arrangement. So it could be that going with Phil is going to be a viable option, but today, right now, we have a different interim chief.
With a storm on our ass, is he here?
Well, Chief Dillon is going to be appointed the Emergency Management Director, and he will be managing our response in the storm.
With all due respect to the chief, and I respect you highly, what fire experience does he have? How does he come in and control on a fire ground?
I don't have fire experience.
Okay. I'm not trying to insult you, sir, but you know how, your police are the same way.
I've been the Assistant Emergency Management Director since I've been appointed chief almost eight years ago. I've worked closely with Warren. What is it going to take for me to have them open the shelter needed during the storm?
Do you really believe that is all that...
With all due respect to the...
For this weekend? For this weekend, yeah.
With all due respect for the next night? Now, I'm running on fumes here, because I also work for Everso part-time. It actually should be the other way around, but...
So, Cap, will you be around this weekend for this storm?
Yes, I will.
Will the other captains be available?
Yes, they will.
We'll need help running the departments.
Correct. And that's what I want to know, okay? Do you see what I'm saying? I have the cut background, and I'm not saying anything against the chief. I applaud the chief, but policemen are just like firemen. They're very flicky, and they light their own, okay? And nothing against the chief. What if we have a fire at Cisco with all the chemicals down there? Who's going to be at command?
Aren't you?
No.
You're the chief.
You are. I may be another call. I'm not the chief of the department's emergency management.
Well, where's our chief then?
Where's our new guy then?
Can I say something?
Sure.
This whole, welcome in, everybody. Your information of this whole process came from that one company that we hired, is that correct?
That's correct.
Was that published?
Yes.
Where is it?
It's going to be on the website tonight. You'll have access.
That's okay.
Excuse me, one at a time, folks. Let's everybody...
How did you get the qualifications for that gentleman that you appointed? Where did you get his qualifications from?
MRI.
MRI.
Do you have them with you right now? Yes or no?
Yeah, we have his resume.
You have his resume? Now, hang on a minute, okay? So you people set up on your decision. Your decision. Do you have fire experience yourself?
No, I have no fire experience.
Do you have fire experience? And do you, sir, have fire experience?
No.
How can you base your decisions without that? MRI doesn't, you can't. You cannot base your decision on that.
We make a decision...
First thing.
No, wait a minute.
Second thing is, if you go with another town, what are my taxes going to do? They're going to go up. Do I want that? Is anybody in this room that might not want that? No, they don't. Okay? Now, we get to a fire, five, six minutes. You think that's going to happen with this other gentleman? The chief's already on site, telling us where to put the truck. That's not going to happen with this gentleman coming in. He's not going to be there in five, six minutes. Okay?
He isn't going to get there during the storm.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Okay? Your insurance is going to go through the roof. Do you understand that? Who's going to pay for that? Taxpayers aplenty. Do you see what's happening? Do you see what's with the building? These guys put in, I put in over 30 hours over the weekend, that storm. Okay? I'm not going to pay for all that. I donate a lot of time. Everybody here donates the time.[1691.12] Everybody here donates the time. Okay, the chief is probably one of the cheapest, cheapest paid fire chiefs in the state of Massachusetts.
And one of the best.
With his knowledge, he should be getting over a hundred thousand dollars a year. That is not even in the picture, obviously. Okay? So, with this all in a basket, that he created, and you've made your decisions, based on...
One consultant.
Do you have any, just the consulting companies?
No, there's more to it than that, but I'm not going to get into that.
Well, why do you need to know that?
No, it's, this is not, I am not gonna, I am not gonna go down that road.
I just wanted to say something. I've been raising my hand for quite some time. I'm not involved in the fire department, other than the support of my man that goes out, night after night, and has to work two or three jobs to be able to volunteer, since he's been sixteen. Now it is on-call. What kind of support do you think that Halifax is gonna care about? Our neighbors, our friends, our family? Do you think they're gonna wanna make the extra effort to get there in the middle of the night, or a storm? Are they gonna be able to go through the traffic? Why do you have a death in town, and just had a burial, because they couldn't get up the road, and had to be redirected? How are they gonna get to us? How quick are they gonna get to us? At what cost are they gonna get to us? I'm very, very concerned. You know, we built these historical homes, and we refilled them with every dime we've earned. And they're gonna, they can blow up in minutes. And we're depending on an out-of-town guy, with no fire experience, impossible, an out-of-town fire department? How many guys are gonna wanna stay on, when Halifax comes in, on-call, to save us? They don't care as much as our guys do about us. And so I feel, I feel more confident keeping it in our own, all the way around.
Yeah, and they're a union too.
And they're a union, which is possible. So I think the cheapest way is to go with the cheapest chief in our state, and keep it in. In our home, our backyard, where we pay the taxes, where we-
I don't know, I don't know if you can merge with the unions.
No decisions have been made.
But there has been, you've already went south.
No, we've decided to explore it. That's the decision that's been made.
We're the taxpayers.
Right. We're taxpayers too.
So what are you gonna pay this chief? Do you have an amount that he has?
We don't, we don't have a chief yet, we have an interim. We have an interim to figure out where we're going.
Is he gonna be here for the storm tonight?
No, he will not be here for the storm tonight.
Of course not.
When does he come in?
He was gonna start tomorrow, but it's weather permitting. All right, 'cause anybody, hold on, Phil, hold on. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? You know what? You took an oath to this town, and I expect everyone to continue doing the fine work that you have done.
And he needs to be here then.
Ma'am, he needs to-
You're right, I have.
You have it upheld.
I totally disagree. I totally disagree.
My chief Bussari, you have not.
Let the chief stay until June, and then we'll figure this out. We need a strong chief, that does his job, and knows, and I know that I can count on him, and I know he has my back, and I have his. Let him stay until June.
I don't think you really understand how the fire service works.
They don't, obviously.
You honestly don't have time. I've looked at it. Okay, when that radio goes off, you need to be there. It could be you, 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 or you. Okay? It's not like he'll be here in the morning, or he's in Georgetown, or he's coming here, no. Five minutes from now, that alarm can go off. And that's life or death for people. And they need direction. They need direction. This is a group of men that have faith there, right now, in their chief.
So Phil, and the other command, could not provide the directions that's needed?
Why don't you tell them?
That's two different jobs. But you don't know that.
You don't, you honestly don't know what goes on on the town. You've never supervised a call, you don't know what goes on.
Okay. Did you, you wanted to say something?
I'd like to ask for Phil calling to send us his resume.
Okay. All right, why don't we do that?
Let's, Phil, just back up a little for a minute. Hold on. First of all, I've heard a lot about Halifax. We don't know, 'cause we haven't sat down and really talked with them, whether this makes sense. One. Two, sit in Halifax's chair for a minute. Do their town residents want their shared service? We don't know. This is part of the exploration we wanna do.
Why is it too-
Hold on.
Hold on.
The other option, there's two other options. One is to run, as we are now, potentially with an on-call, permanent, some permanent people.
Correct.
The other option is to go to a private service for EMS.
We know that's not gonna happen.
We know that, everything we've seen so far says that's prohibitively too much money.
It's prohibitive, isn't it?
But doing our due diligence, we wanted to make sure that we at least looked at it. We're not sure about shared service, it's not just Halifax. Cabo would like to talk to us too.
Then why do you not have to talk to him?
So, I'm just saying, most of the towns around here are looking at shared services across all the different aspects of running a town. Whether it's fire, whether it's animal control, whether it's zoning, everybody's trying to say, where is there an opportunity?
Agreed.
We're doing the same thing. We hired MRI because, when we went out and interviewed the various consultants, they came in with what we thought was the best proposal, at a cost-effective rate. We wanted to know that we had somebody who was looking out, because we are not professional firefighters, obviously.
Who isn't?
We are, we are.
We are, we are, three of us.
We know you guys are. You know, you got your certifications, we know that. But we wanted to make sure that the town had a five-year, or a longer operating plan on how we were gonna go forward. And that's what we're committed to. We wanna see the best fire service we can. But right now-
You don't think we have the best right now?
In the last year and a half I've been here, we've gone through, well, I shouldn't, longer, it's two years, over fifty people.
So, you know why?
Whoa, whoa. Come on, guys, one at a time, one at a time.
You people are coming in, I've had other people coming in and saying, boy, this thing is, you know, just not working.
You mean the ones that have been fired?
Yeah.
So- So our, our decision was to go out and get some help, in taking a look at what's going on. We want the same end. A professional fire service, that's cost-effective for the town, that we can go to the town residents and say, this works. Given the money you're spending, this works. We have no alternative reason not to want that.
Can I just say one snippet?
Sure.
As far as the turnover, if you notice, the turnovers, first of all, it slowed down, because I've changed a couple things along with the chief, we've worked together. I think we work very well together. But, I've been at other call departments, I've been a career firefighter, I've been a call, I've been a long here. The call department I was at, on average, we went through fifty people a year, on average. And I was a deputy chief there. And it's just the way it is, small town fire departments, the guys get their training through us, they stay for a year or two, and then they go to the big departments. It's just the way it is. Halifax has lost three people in the last month. So Halifax isn't the same boat we are, you know, it's not, and I'm not, I'm saying Halifax is right next to us, and it's the only other call, slash combination, department. Cabo has a different thing. Most of the people in that town, work in that town. That's why that system works so well. They live in it, they work in it, that's why it's there. We don't have that luxury. We've put it out there, I'm gonna, with the chief's permission, I was gonna put it out there, again, next month, have an open house, have it for all town residents, to see if they would like to be part of the fire pa, part of the call. Because we do need a town cell, but you don't get that. We have an older, older society here, and they just can't physically do it, so-
Also call three EMS, and EMT on the same time.
All right, Phil, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you be willing to act as our interim fire chief?
For a couple weeks.
For several weeks.
Do it.
Do it.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Then, I'll make a motion that we rescind our vote, to appoint Mr. Beardsley as the-
Fire administrator.
Administrator of fire services. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. I'll make a motion that we appoint Phil Curran interim fire chief, until, what, the end of April?
Well-
Why not like the end of the year?
Why don't we do interim at-will? Can we do interim at-will, like we were?
Would you be comfortable with interim at-will, so that if you decided, for whatever reason, it wasn't a good fit, or would you be more comfortable with-
Never gonna leave these guys.
Okay.
So, you think you would either?
All right, why don't we do that, as interim at-will? Effective immediately. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We got two people who have their hands raised for a long time.
Thank you, Phil. Okay. Anybody that hasn't spoken yet? Okay, in the back.
In the back.
Go in the back. And could you guys identify yourselves, 'cause there's, I'm not sure. Okay, thank you.
Just so you guys are aware, I don't know how in-depth he looks, I hear a lot about the turnover rate. I literally get tagged on social media, in a different fire position, opening, every single day. Every single day at those times. I don't know if you guys recognize the climate of the fire service, as it is right now. For anybody with that P after their name, they can pretty much go wherever they want. For the first time in recent memory, and it's, and it's kind of a perfect storm of things, where everybody went to an ALS system, and so, all those people who were BLS, all through those years, who are now retiring, they have to be filled with paramedics. And there was, you know, a lot of hirings, at the end of the first Gulf War, now those guys have all done twenty-five years, and are retired. There are countless openings. Jump on indeed, and you'll, at any point, you can pick up five, six thousand, and ask to hire noncivil servants. Civil service exam is coming up on March twenty-fourth. For the first time that I've ever seen multiple departments, that said, no, come and talk to us, before you even take the exam, come talk to us, open houses, so they can already get ahead on the group. So-
Should we discuss that tonight, as far as command authority?
Yeah.
Given that there's a large call component to our department, and anybody with that paramedic after their name, I can probably, I think of ten people, off the top of my head, that have moved on to other full-time positions. So, they work, this is a part-time job, which is, which is what it is for them, but they move on to a full-time position, to look out for themselves and their families. So citing the turnover, is, I think it's, I think it's going a little deeper than, than just not just fifty people going.
We've stopped many firefighters, so it's not what we lost, it's what we have here. We have a great fire department.
Okay. All right, can I ask Phil one more question, before we move on? Phil, would you be willing to serve as the emergency manager director, or interim, or would you prefer that we appoint cap?
Can I comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll do it.
Okay. All right. So I move that the board vote to name Phil Curran as emergency management director for the town of Plumpton, effective immediately. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay. All right, it looks like we've got repeats, so everybody, you can all, sir, why don't we go with you first? All right, hold on a second, Rebecca.
This is just a quick-
Yeah, these guys are on the department, so I'd really like to hear what they say. Okay.
I've been a resident of the town for close to twenty years, I was consulting with Chief Bussari, when a lot of the turnover, and we try and get more stability, shall we say. I was a firefighter for a while, for thirty-two years, like I said, I am a town resident for close to twenty. I am not gonna get confrontational, I believe, you know that I stand behind the chief one hundred percent. So, I'm not gonna change your minds, I know that. When you are considering, and I'm not saying you aren't yet, but when you are considering consolidation, all right, I want you to remember what happened last weekend, with all those calls, all right? And ask yourselves, when you are going over the consolidation, is Halifax gonna pull people from here, or are they gonna even it out? Honest to God, and I'm, again, whether it's Phil, whether it's Chief Bussari, whether you make Chief Dillon a public safety director, what I am really urging you guys to do, is keep it in town. For the simple fact that, once you stop regionalizing, they can pull resources, all right? Again, there was a mutual aid agreement set up, every once in a while, we go down to Halifax, I know Halifax to Cabo, to cover their EMS, they come up here all the time. If you guys really wanna look at a fire department, that is the model, go down to Halifax, go down to Cabo. The only thing Cabo does not do is EMS, they have a separate system. But again, when we were going to recruit people, to come in as qualified firefighters, our hands were tied, because part of the provision is, they have to be EMT, or paramedic. Most people that live in the town, that would be interested in joining as a call department, they're not gonna take any EMT course. I believe firefighter in what, here is probably the only one that I know of that qualified today. All right? You've gotta get rid of that component, to get people from within the town to volunteer their time as firefighters.
If we were to offer, I'd love to see us go back to a qualified department.
That's pretty much what we have now, aside from the two, now that you've got a dual service.
But if we were to offer some type of incentive, like health insurance, would that help to keep qualified fighters in town, and stay in the positions?
What I ran up against with the chief, when I first came in, was the pay frankly stung. I mean, you know that, we all know that. All right, you guys finally have it up to a decent thing. I am not gonna speak for everybody that left. The one lieutenant that I know that did leave, that went to Halifax originally, he went because it is a union position.
Right.
He has much more stability. The guys that are here, like Ian, for example, are pretty much at-will. You guys could decide tomorrow, say, see you later, there's no stability here. Okay? And I'm not knocking it, I'm just giving you, that's what the problem is. You can give him health benefits, you could give him a trip to Aruba every year, there's no stability. If anybody wants to, you know, start a family, do everything else, they can't go week to week, wondering if they're still gonna have the position. And I mean, the other thing too, is, again, I'm not knocking you guys, don't take it the wrong way, I've actually calmed down, since I came in the room. The department, as you know, has been in a bit of a turmoil, all right? It has, and I'm telling you this, and I'm not a member of the department, it has subsided. It is on the right track. There's been a lot more training going on, I started that, and then Captain Curran came in and took it over after I left. There's a high degree, a lot of the people that left, left because they couldn't handle it. One person, who shall remain nameless, with respect to the, could not put a mask over her face. All right, she could not deal with the confinement of an air mask. Well, that's the type of person you can't have on a fire ground.
Right.
They have to be able to do both jobs. All right? So for her to leave, again, it's no loss. They were gonna have to do something about it anyway. All right, fortunately, I believe she realized that, she just couldn't do it. This isn't for everybody.
No, it isn't for everybody.
The way the town and the department is set up, they come in, they try it for a little while, when there's an opening at the fire academy, they go to the academy, okay? A lot of this is learn as you go, okay? They come in, they have no knowledge, they have no background, it's something they want to try, all right? It would be like me going to Chief Dillon and saying, "Hey, can I be a cop for a few minutes?" And him giving me a gun and saying, "Sure, go ahead." He's going to put himself through some vetting process.
Right.
Before any of that happens.
Not after what I seen tonight.
It's one of those things that the chief has to deal, has been dealing with a real stack deck against. And I'm not saying that against you guys, because you don't know this stuff. He's had to deal with people coming in, doing an interview process, maybe they'll work out, maybe they won't. There's no real way to determine. They don't go to the academy for us to see whether they can hack it. They don't go to the academy for us to see whether they can put a mask on, go through a smoking boom. It's one of those things that they have to learn as they go along. I mean, like I said, that's the way it is in this town. It's not going to change unless, you know, you guys find a boatload of money someplace to start this off.
One of the things you're going to have to consider, if you want to reinstitute a main call force from the fire aspect of, is you're going to have to put money in the gear. That's why the chief is, that's why he's always kept a cross frame, because we don't have the, we don't have the extra additional gear just for town residents who want to be called in.
Okay.
So that's something you're going to have to consider. That, you're going to have to put money in this department, one way or the other. That's something this department has always been lacking, it's always been behind the eight ball.
Give me just one more.
Okay.
To finish up the other thing, and then I promise I'll shut up.
All right, and then we're going to go to Rebecca.
Right, and like I said, I promise I'll shut up. Right now, you guys do, or the town does, have the best of both worlds, for the simple fact that we have two people on duty 24/7 that can respond to both fires and EMS, okay? You go down to Carver, you have people.
Let me just say thanks to Chief Osari.
Yes.
Thank you.
You have the fire department that has to come in.
You have a full team.
You have the fire department that's a call department that has to get the tone, we have to respond. Right now, the alarm goes off, you've got two people immediately responding, all right? I had to call last week to my wife who was badly dehydrated, I wasn't around, all right? They were there within three minutes. Had a line set up, had her all hooked up, down to the Jordan before I could even call up and say what was going on.
You have three people, because he goes to every one.
Right.
All right, Rebecca?
Yes, hi, good evening. I just walked in, I didn't even know what was going on, but I'm here. I, I believe that we had shared services a while back, didn't we?
Uh-uh.
Like 25, 30 years ago?
No.
Sure you ever did?
No, not in fire EMS.
Well, I remember stopping on my way to Shaw's, when a 17-year-old boy stopped, somebody dropped at their mailbox, who was an elderly man, was chief of the Wapenoags prior, and he had a massive heart attack, and we had to call for another ambulance, took 25 minutes for him to get.
That's before we had our own service.
Yeah, not the other one, sorry. Okay, I think it's the chief about that replacement. I just wanted to know, because I just walked in, I didn't even know what was going on, so.
No, we never had shared services. All right, sir?
This lady's been asking.
I'm a paramedic with the town of Plumpton, I've been here for two years. I retired from Marshfield Fire, okay? And I came here and, you know, with Chief Osari's blessing, you know, I've been able to work, and I'm going to stay here. My question to you is, when you guys do the shared services thing, something that you should look at, you're going to lose revenue to the ambulance. That's, if you go to help, they're getting all that money.
You're right.
Granted, it's not much that's coming into the town, but it's something. You're going to lose that. You're going to lose the people in this room.
It's about lives.
Okay?
It's about lives.
It is just, what needs to happen in this department is, we need to stay in-house, we need to build this department to be one of the best. And, you know, Chief Osari did an excellent job with it. It just, there's a lot of things that, that study did. Now, I was interviewed for it, and when I made a comment about the regionalization, I shut right out, said, "Okay, we're all done here," all right? So I've been doing this a while. It's just, please reach out to us, we'll save you $20,000, okay? Reach out to us, we know how this system's going to work, and how it's going to, you know, there isn't a firefighter in this room that won't lay down a life, lay down their life for a Plumpton resident, because that's what we do, okay? Thank you for reversing your motion about the interim chief, because it would have been, especially with what we have coming up in the next couple of days, it would have been a very chaotic.
Right.
Thing. As, as safety officer for this department, I would have, you know, I'm glad you made that decision, because things are now, it's going to be a cohesive run between what's going to happen. Just come to us, you know, we can, there's a lot of us that have experience that have been in the fire service a long time, just because we don't have a sheet of paper that says we're certified, as far as I'm concerned, that's just a sheet of paper, you know? So just.
Thank you.
Reach out to us.
Thank you.
Ma'am, you wanted to.
Hi, Nancy Curtin.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, Greg. The thing is, that in my opinion, whether you want it or not, is the fact that I don't understand, maybe it's me, but I don't understand why or how this whole situation transpired. I, I hear the contract, you weren't going to renew the contract. There's no reason, why, why did you decide that? Was it for performance, was it cost effect, what, why? There's no, we haven't heard anything as to why. Has he done bad job? No. Has, if you look on Facebook or Plumpton Helping Plumpton, everybody congratulated them because of all the work safety work that they've done, people who were trained, residents, because they were happy to help. Why, why would we think that some regionalization thing, if we feel this way about our own department and our own residents, don't you think Halifax is going to feel the same way?
Sure.
I just, it just blows my mind that neither one, neither town has gone to the residents first to find out about it. If you, did you interview Cisco, did you interview light controls, did you interview any of these businesses? Did Halifax interview any of the businesses up there? Any of the banks? You know, I, it just, the trailer park, that, it just, it just boggles my mind, I just can't get over the fact that, oh, well, yeah, we're going to, we'll just decide, you know, the three people here will just decide, we'll have, we'll have a consultant come in, and based on previous hearsay, we will talk about not re- renewing or, you know, renewing his contract.
Close the door, thanks.
I can't believe that three intelligent elected officials would do this. I, I just, I, it just, it ticks me off big time, when you put that.
We love our chief, we feel safe with our chief, you know?
Let me ask you this, you said a week, you made the decision to not renew his contract about a week ago?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, so I'm assuming that was not based on the report that was published tonight? Okay, so what was it based on?
I'm not going to get into that.
I'm not asking for the instances, I'm asking what information you used to make that decision?
Uh, no, I don't think you do, I don't think you do. That's, that's not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go there.
Were these discussions in regards to the chief, whether or not to renew his contract, those were all done in executive session?
The, this was the first executive session.
Okay, well, you guys all came to.
We've been meeting with the chief in executive session for matters.
Okay.
Prior to this.
Okay, but as far as the three of you coming to the conclusion that you weren't going to meet, renew the chief's contract, you have to discuss that, correct?
Yes, we met tonight.
Just tonight?
Mm-hmm.
But you indicated to me that you made the decision to not re- renew his contract over a week ago, correct? Okay, so, please, so when did you, you did pre, when did you meet to, when did you come to the conclusion that you weren't going to renew his contract?
When did we come to the conclusion?
We've had several executive sessions.
It was tonight, but, I mean, we've had several executive sessions where we've met with the chief, and we met once without the chief.
But you, you picked somebody a week ago, you indicated earlier that you made that decision, picked somebody, based on the fact that you weren't going to renew his contract, correct?
About a week ago.
No, not a week ago. It wasn't really that, it wasn't a week ago.
We, we met it with the chief in executive session, I don't know, three, four times, I guess. We had one meeting where the chief wasn't invited, that, the three of us met because the chief elected not to meet with us.
We can just do this.
And that was the last executive session. And then we met again tonight in executive session, and we made a decision.
And you just, you came to that conclusion based on the information you were provided, correct?
I would say it's more than, if you mean by the consultant, no, that wasn't the impetus that was having these meetings. We didn't have a consultant at the time we started meeting in executive session.
What was the origin of the information that you received that you made this decision based on?
I'm not going to go there.
Why not?
Why? That's what we want to know. Does the chief mind if you go there?
I don't.
You're really prohibitive for discussing executives. It would discuss in executive session, and Massachusetts law also prohibits you from disposing portions of personnel files and documents like that, it just did.
Right. All right, sir?
If the chief.
Let the, let this other gentleman talk for a little bit.
Well, I have one point.
Okay, go ahead, Andy.
If the chief is willing to waive that right as far as his personnel file.
No, it's not his personnel file.
It's not his personal.
No, it's, it's not his to waive.
Yes, it absolutely is.
We're not talking about the chief's personnel file.
No.
That's as far as we're going to go. Yes, sir, you want?
The chief has been given authorization to disseminate Mass General Law Chapter 148, which the chief knows is pretty much the rules that the fire service follows. I suggest to the board that you transfer that authority to Mr. Collins before you move in.
Okay.
David?
He would have that authority by virtue of the appointment, but it's still.
Okay, so what was the MGL?
Mass General Law 148. The governing body for the fire service under investigation.
So we would need to give him that authority?
I would highly suggest you give him that, he has the authority to disseminate the rules out through the fire service, through the fire marshal's office and otherwise.
What's the difference between that and the appointment that we made?
You just appointed him to a position, you didn't give him the authority to disseminate that position.
And the authority is not within the position?
It's not assumed enough.
All right, let's do it, I mean, you don't have a problem with that.
Is that all right, David?
I disagree, but I think you should do it just to.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion that we authorize Phil Curran under MGL 1, Chapter 148 to.
Have the associated powers.
Have the associated powers. All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all right, Nancy?
Yes. What, when you people were in executive session with Chief Osari, did you have an attorney with you, your attorney, town attorney?
No.
Town council?
Not in any of our previous meetings.
Okay, was there any meaning at all that Chief Osari could have had a counselor, an attorney with him?
Sure.
Sure, that was his, his decision, I mean, he could have.
I still go back to the fact that I think that it's not just your choice to decide here, there, or whatever, I think it's the residents' choice.
But it's not, it's, the Board of Selectmen are the appointing authority, and we are the ones who negotiated his contract, it's the way it's always been done, and we are the ones who chose not to reappoint the chief. And that's.
Mr. Collins wants to.
Mr. Collins?
You've made that decision.
We have made that decision.
There's no previous other meeting, you guys not, not renewing his contract.
That's correct.
All right.
All right, hold on.
I want to keep it very friendly, I had not, my name is Jack Collins, I'm returning, don't wish that way, right, in my opinion, but in any event, our president, our chief here tonight, I'm meeting some of the county chiefs and the Mass Fire, FCM, I asked him to come down and see what I can do. So we spent some time in fairness with the board, slightly, doing the best we could, okay, to try to convince them that, number one, they ought to renew his contract, okay, or renew the appointment.
So Chair, are you going to disclose the executive session that you attended?
Yes.
Okay.
So in any event, my, my, my roles tonight had been to try to make that work. So the chief hadn't had a council before tonight, and we did, we tried to make that work. I'm not, you know, involved all through this, you know, this posted on the town's website, yes, tonight or tomorrow, there'll be a study, and you can take a look at that as well. There's no recommendation in that study that they get new chief, quite frankly, it looked like they were recommending over and over again the chief work to make the study happen. So the chief is obviously ready, willing, and able to do that. Much of my time is representing cities and towns when we talk about police on administrative leave, and we do that once in a while when they're a threat. Oftentimes, the police department, for example, because they are armed, and they've just beaten up their spouse or their girlfriend, things like that, we worry about it. But I've never, quite frankly, seen the town put something on administrative leave like this without some real fear that it's going to do something terribly wrong. So that, that part is least unusual, so if they couldn't do it, I think everything you've heard is correct. The law doesn't give the chief a hearing, the law doesn't require them to give reasons, but it is American, okay? And so people ask, like, we address the issue of what can we do? Because later on, everyone's going to go up to Carver and wonder, like, okay, now what do we do next, okay? So the chief's going to get paid between now and June. Could the board's elected change their mind? Yes, they could. Is it likely? Probably not. Is there an election coming up? I guess it is, yes, okay? And that may change, okay? We obviously did the best we could to try to change that. You've heard, at this point in time, you're not going to get any explanation for what the reasons are, okay? But obviously, if they were operational, things are working well. The consultants have said the chief is the one who ought to be able to make this, this transition. So if you believe that the board didn't make up their mind before tonight, okay, I have a bridge to sell you, okay? If you believe that the letter that they gave the chief, it was, you know, typed up in the two minutes that I went out there and came back in, then we have a bigger bridge. The real answer is that all this was already laid out before tonight, okay? They didn't decide to make a phone call and see if this guy from Georgetown would come down here, all that's been put in place. Are you willing to do it? How much are we going to pay you? You know, they knew we couldn't come tomorrow because of the storm, so understand, the political process is yours right now, if you want it, okay? And you can hold people accountable, but you're not going to get an answer, because nobody's here to answer it. So the political process is yours, if you want to take the town back and you want it, and you really mean this about, about the chief, then you do it exactly, and if you don't, act the other way.
And I'm up for election this year, so I wouldn't advise a recall, because it'd be too cost-effective or cost ineffective, and not enough, oh, we don't, I thought we had a recall provision.
I don't believe so.
I thought we did.
No, we did.
So, yeah, we do, we have a recall, but the amount of time it would take and the money it would cost, I think it would be misuse of the taxpayers' dollars, but you're welcome to cut, to run against me in May, run against me in May. If you're not happy with my decision, run against me in May.
I've got a question for the attorney. Does the chief fall under Mass General Law Chapter 42, I believe it is, the strong chief act?
He is, but what happens is, the strong chief ordinarily, okay, is a lifetime appointment, unless you're a town this size here, and it can be.
Find the 5,000 residents.
Right, right, so what happens is, in, I've had discussion with council, okay, we're in agreement, and it, I'm not, it all implies that they didn't have the right to do what they're doing, and all those things, I think that's all perfectly legal in terms of the vote, okay? Now, well, you're not going to ask them to believe that they didn't make it their mind before tonight, but in any event, legally, they've got a right to do that. So he is, right now, he's had, he has a contract, or he has an appointment up until June 30, and at the end of that time, the law doesn't require them to renew it, the law doesn't require them to give the hearing.
That's 180 days before termination.
That's not, that, that was in the contract, there's a lot that's being required. So he's, he's, he's going to be out of a job on July 1st, unless this or some other board votes to change it.
Folks, I, we have had to make some agonizing decisions, we've made them. This is the beginning of discussions on moving forward, not the end, and however unhappy you all might be, I hope you all understand the degree to which we have wrestled with this, and will continue to wrestle with this for the good of you guys and the good of the town in general.
I just want to say that I do hope that you realize that people in this room and the town are as stupid as you think.
Are what?
Are not as stupid as you think.
I don't think any of you are stupid.
I think we admire everyone in this room.
You, you applied for a grant in November of 2017 to study regionalization, correct?
No, to explore, actually, no, the grant, well, actually, yes, the grant that I applied for in November was to explore shared services, because that was the sense, I just always thought that was the direction we needed to head. And you're assuming that Halifax is going to take us over. It could be as simple as they cover a couple of shifts for us, because we have staffing issues. We have no idea what this is going to look like.
We're on the extra.
The schedule, and the chief has told us there's staffing issues. So we needed to look at filling the shifts for public safety. So that was the impetus, we're looking at a cost analysis to keep what we have and move it in the right direction, or what is the best way to head? We don't know, that's what I applied for in November of 2017. Hold on, hold on.
But that grant involved Halifax, correct?
It would be exploring shared services with Halifax, but it, it could be Carver as well.
You didn't, no, but it involved.
It does involve Halifax.
Halifax got part of that, correct?
Halifax did.
Right, they got actually a bigger portion than we did.
They did, they got a much bigger portion than we did.
You never discussed applying to that grant with the chief, did you?
I am not sure if I did or not.
Yeah, let me just extrapolate a little bit. We made the decision to look at a consultant before the grant was ever made, okay? We went to town meeting, asked town meeting, would they, okay, right. About six months later, along comes the state and says, "By the way, we have these grants open, that if you're looking at shared services or regionalization or anything along that, apply." We said, "This is a no-brainer. We're going to take a look anyways, we've already got town meeting approval, so let's apply for the grant."
You had town meeting approval for a study.
Exactly.
A snapshot of the department, not the merger of Halifax.
And we...
That's not what we're talking about.
We had the approval to do a study of whether we should look at shared service, running the department the way it is, going to an outside ambulance, basically look at how the operation would be put together for the next five years. We had no, we had nothing that said shared service is the endpoint. So we, when the grant came along, we said, let's take advantage of it. Because if we can get fifty thousand, why not? It'll lessen the twenty thousand that town had approved, and that'll go back into the kitty.
But do you see why we, 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 we questioned your credibility? Because you've never, you've never consulted with the chief when you, when you went with that, when you applied for that grant?
It's for a cost analysis, Andrew. That's the logical next step.
I understand what it is.
That's the logical next step.
Why am I, why do I hear from, from Halifax before our chief even knows?
You know what? We cannot control what Halifax does.
But you can control telling the chief what's going on.
We, I did tell the chief that I applied for that grant. I did.
Told him after the fact.
Right. It was the logical next step.
You told him after we got it.
No, I told him I applied for it.
No, you didn't.
Yes, I believe I did.
I'm, no.
But it's, you're, you're splitting, we're splitting hairs here. It's the logical next step to find the best direction for this department to head. We support you, and we want to find out the way that we can help you to be the best department for the town that's fiscally responsible, and we have a duty to explore options, and that's what we're doing.
But you're being less than transparent.
I don't think that's the case at all.
Well, I think it is.
Well, that's your opinion.
I do have my opinion.
That's your opinion, okay, so let's move on.
By the majority of the people in here.
Sir, you got your hand up. You had it for a while.
I've been in the town since nineteen sixty. Seen a lot of people. Seen a lot of people come and go. At the age of ten, twelve years old, we used to jump on the fire, but we called the fire full house. Nobody paid us, or they said nothing. They fought a three-day fire over, with a railroad attack on Kingston. Jumped and jumped back and forth for three days. Everybody in this town supported the fire department. Nobody asked any questions, nobody got paid half the time, we just went, okay? Today's things have changed. She came up to the fire station because she was dehydrated. One minute later, she was in the Yamnitz on the way to Jordan. You can't do that when you have shared service, one, okay? I've seen good people retire from this department, that held this department, that did so much for the department, that what you made today would be a peanut shell in their pocket for what they did to this department, okay? If you do this, the shared, looking into this, I do believe, and I know for a fact it's a long way to go, hire more people full-time for the department that are here tonight, give them a decent salary, and be done with it.
And you don't have to look out for...
Then you don't have to go spend a twenty thousand on a survey that one of our fine gentlemen was interviewed in Halifax, and the chief was very upset about that. So that makes that whole survey not good. That's a, that's not good. And I don't know why that was done, and I'm not going to go into that. That's a shame that was done that way. How many people here were to do it? I wasn't.
I wasn't.
But the time that they wanted interviews was a short window.
That's not really acceptable.
They notified us on a Friday afternoon to be ready to be interviewed on a Monday.
On a Monday. Now everybody home by...
They went to Halifax and some of the interviews...
Excuse me, they didn't even use a weekend that people are home to say, hey. They didn't interview anybody at Cisco, biggest stakeholder in this town. They didn't talk with... Do you think that's appropriate? I don't think the service...
I, I have, I don't know who they interviewed.
They didn't interview Cisco.
Well, we had a list of who they were interviewing, and I believe that they were.
And you wrote an email back that said it is what it is.
You're right. The study is what it, what it is. At that point, we're not changing it.
Okay, but they didn't, they didn't fulfill their job. They didn't complete a full study. You should have insisted that they do that.
I disagree. I think they completed a, a full study. I disagree. I completely disagree. I think that they completed a very thorough study, and they had a long list. Cisco doesn't pay the bill.
Yeah, it is.
They don't pay the chief's salary, this, the town does, not Cisco.
We, as you know, we...
All of us do. All of us do. You're right. All right, chief, you want to say something?
President through you, I want to take this time to recognize and thank the chief for his dedication.
It's the beginning of the discussion rather than...
Right, right. All right, folks, this is the beginning of this discussion, not the end.
Okay, great, because I don't even believe that the other chief prior to him, the one that got let go because pornographic stuff, do, I don't know if you're aware of that.
I'm aware of that.
I don't even think they did him as much of an injustice as they're doing to our guy who's brought us this far.
Let's, uh...
All right. One more, some more...
Sure, I'm in fire department again. So now, hearing what everyone's had to say tonight, and, you know, what we're saying has been completing the study, people haven't been talked to, we haven't been talked to, so you as a selectman wanted to make the best decision in the interest of the residents of the town, you would like to buy to serve, what truly the citizens would like. Are you willing to talk with us at any type of session, or stakeholders in town? Because as you tell, we all have our opinions, we like to be heard.
Absolutely.
Those of us that would like to continue in a transparent, but progressive professional manner as a selectman, are you willing to hold sessions with members of this department or members of town or business owners in town that would like to say their piece?
Absolutely.
And maybe both?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Can I say one thing? You know, we, we made a list of people. We asked the chief, as far as the fire department, that in fact, he knew who should be talked to, and I don't know how that was handled, whether it was just, you know, the consultants came down and said, well, who's available or what? I don't know that. But that was being done through the chief. We did give a list of a contact at Cisco. We gave a contact at Light Control, and we went down through a bunch of people that used to work for the fire department, as well as other people that were, wanted to talk. I know they talked, I believe, to, they either talked to Light Control or Cisco, and the other one wasn't available because he was traveling, and they said, well, fine, we'll do a telephone interview. And for whatever reason, they couldn't contact him. But the contact, we gave him the email, we gave him the contact, telephone number, et cetera. I believe the man was out of the country at the time.
So may I reply to that, please?
Sure.
So having been one of the people that we were told we could contact them, I, as soon as I actually found out that we could, I called one of the consultants at the number that was given, and he gave me a time of seven thirty at night to call him back, which I did. I didn't receive a call back until nine thirty, and I couldn't answer his call because I was actually taking one of the citizens to the hospital, and I was going to throw my phone, you know, drive, talk on my phone.
Sure.
I called him back twice, left him two voicemails, and called him back the next day to try to make myself available, and I worked four jobs, served still in the Army Reserve, so I could be away for extended periods of time. So with that being said, I think it's fair to say availability was not fully accomplished of them trying to truly reach it, because I know people have really tried to reach out. So with everything that's been said tonight, to move forward instead of looking back at the past and, well, this wasn't done, this was done, because I love this fire department. I moved down in the area because of it. I would like to see us move forward progressively, so I'm asking that for the next coming days and the, the next part of this process, that we have an open forum together so that we can get the best decision possible for the residents of this town. I'm looking to move forward progressively.
That's our goal.
I, I would say, you know, you have a tight department. Why don't you pick three or four representatives? Obviously, we can't talk to you all at the same time.
Is that what you guys would like to do? Have a group of us?
Yes, yes.
Yes, sure.
To be part of the process, absolutely.
We don't pretend to be the...
Current, you know, your engine chief, right, correct?
Well, why don't you do it out of the...
So we can set a team of us?
Right.
And have a meeting?
Right.
I, this, this board wants nothing more than to make the best decisions possible, and we know you guys are in the forefront of that and absolutely positively want to hear from you along the way. I think I just have to say, because we have other business to get to tonight, we're not going to make any other decisions tonight. We've made more than enough decisions. This is going to be another ongoing discussion, and we are going to struggle. Hopefully, the end of the struggle will be an even better department, in whatever form that takes. And I, I think, I, I'll just add, I think we are here, we are a very hard-working board. I think we, all three of us are more than welcome anytime to hear from any of you. Our phone numbers are out there, our emails are out there. We are available.
I, I would really like to have three or four of you get together and synthesize what you're, you know, get those points to us so that we can talk about it.
We'd be more than happy.
Okay, great, so I think we can move on.
Perfect, okay.
There's real concern...
All right, hold on. One last question. Last question.
Just, just so the board has the information, just so it's, it's clear. I have the email from Bob Blumer at MRI, and it was dated November tenth, Friday at five forty-eight in the afternoon, and it sought to set up interviews in Plinton on Monday, November thirteenth, and that was the only date given for active members of the fire department, which is largely a call department, people have other jobs to meet with them. I, I'm actually full-time with this department, and I wasn't even given the courtesy of the meeting with you. I had to go to the Halifax Fire Department to meet with them, which, it actually ruffled a few feathers because the Halifax chief didn't even, didn't give him the courtesy of telling him that I was coming. So that, that went over less than, less than, well. But just so you guys have an accurate depiction of that, you say you got a full study, I don't know what they're telling you, they, they didn't give ample time to, to interview active members of this department.
Thank you for letting us know that.
Okay.
There's a real concern that this is just the first, that you've already made your decision, this is just the first step in, in going that way, getting rid of the chief.
That is a completely inaccurate statement.
Let me tell you why there's a real concern.
You know what, Andrew? It's, it's inaccurate.
Let me tell you why there's a real concern.
Why? Tell me why.
Okay, because we're hearing about the Halifax chief picking and choosing what engines he's going to keep, and what's going to go.
That's ridiculous.
Where is this coming from?
You tell me.
It's not from us.
We're here.
Not from us. You know what? I think somebody is stirring the pot, and it certainly isn't this board.
But this is something you need to know.
Okay. All right, well, I will, I will speak to the chief in Halifax and let him know that this nonsense needs to stop, because we have no idea what direction we're heading in, we're exploring, and all that does is cause hard feelings and is very detrimental to a very transparent process that we're trying to hold here. So if that's the case, I'm going to give him a call tonight and let him know that he needs to get his people in check, because I don't want to hear that kind of crap anymore.
That's coming from the top down.
All right. I'm, and I'm going to call him, and we'll put an end to it, because that's, that's a bunch of crap, and it's counterproductive to the process that we're working for. Exactly. It's counterproductive.
Mrs. Freitas is the last one.
All right, Mrs. Freitas.
We understand what the process of regionali-, regionalization is.
No.
No. And, and quite frankly, we're not looking for regionalization because we think it brings a bureaucracy with it. We've talked about shared services. We haven't defined what that is. We don't even know if Halifax has any interest. When I say Halifax, the residents, I mean, can, they'd have to go and sell lists to their town meeting.
As well as us, is, you know, this town, do we have the interest of doing that?
I think most of them being interested would be up there.
Right. And to explore it through grant dollars is the most commonsensical way to do this, rather than spending the town's money to explore something that the town may not be interested in. That's why we applied for the funding to take the next step, to get hard dollars, to figure out what we need to either put into this department to make this the best department it can possibly be, or other options that we need to explore. So that's why we applied for the next step, to continue the transparent process that we have started.
Two things, two things about the transparent process, just to remind you all, we have MRI on the agenda for next Monday night at six P.M. to discuss the report to us. I want to just let you know, I have no idea at this point what shared services even means. For anyone to think that we've decided at this point, I'm going to need, and I think we're all going to need, models and options to even have an idea. So we are so far away from having made a decision. Not only have we made a decision, we don't even know what we might be deciding about.
This is where you, if you put together a little committee, can help us understand how things would work. Okay.
That's perfect.
Is the report up?
It's on the fire department portion of the website, but it's...
Can they access it?
Yeah.
Okay, so the MRI report is up on...
The website.
The website.
What time are they coming next Monday?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Yes.
And they're coming to do a report on the report they put up?
Yes, to report on the report.
To present and answer all everyone's questions.
Okay. So, please, you're welcome to attend. We'd love to have you. Okay.
Be cordial.
All right, folks, so more to come, and we'll work with you guys, with your committee, and try to figure out what's the best course of action moving forward. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for coming very much. All right, so who we taking first? Tara or...
Tara or Brian. I don't know if Brian's even still here.
Tara and...
Hey, let's talk some more.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Bill, you're going to need your help. You'll get it. I don't fail.
Thanks for volunteering.
Nice to see you again.
All right, so are we going to talk about...
Tara and John Wick.
Bree, you're right. Just five minutes. Just tell John.
Five minutes.
Can you give this to them?
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll make a motion, and we take a five-minute recess.
Second.
All right, John, we're back.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know if you all know me, I'm Larry Hager from Hager Brothers Cranberry. And over here on the bog on Route fifty-eight, we've been stripping back the piles, and first thought was to, we have to rebuild those bogs, maybe one a year, because all the wild vines are taking, starting to take over, and the crops are just going right down. And so rather than stack all those strippings on top of the piles that are already there, we'd like to remove those piles and then replace them with the, with the strippings. And so there'll still be piles there, but it'll be fresh strippings. And we had a permit to do that, probably, I don't know what year it was, probably around 2004, 2005, all I remember was Joe Freitas and Howard Randall, and I'm not sure, the other assessor might have been Springer, I can't remember, but, I don't know if it was Springer, I think it was before John Henry.
Oh yeah, would have been a wreck, I believe.
Yeah, but, so, it probably was Rick Springer, but, I don't know if it was Rick or Christine, I can't even remember, it was one of the Springers anyway. And so I would just like to renew that, we never did act on it, we, they issued it and we never did, but it's, it's just for the, it's actually the topsoil and the stumps and all of the top layer when we made the cranberry bog back in 83 and 84 when we did it. So, I don't know what's involved with that, I just don't wanna...
You're just moving dirt around within the...
No, no, we wanna truck that out of there and then make another pile where those piles sit instead of building way up high. Had to mow them and everything.
So you're wanting to truck out stumps?
No, the stumps are all rotten, we'd probably just push them in another pile, that'll rot some more.
So what would be trucked out?
There would be topsoil from the original, original bog construction.
And then what would be moved around?
Well, we're gonna, there's the bog, the furthest bog in the back is going to be renovated. And so we'll take about six inches off of that and then replace it with new sand and new vines, so...
Where's the topsoil going?
I don't know, we'll buy it.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think the existing bylaw says it can't leave town.
You can't leave, you can't leave the property, the existing topsoil. So you filled out a permit in the 80s, and it was approved, and you wanna...
No, it wasn't in the 80s, I think it was in the 2000s.
Okay, in the 2000s.
Yeah.
All right, I think we're gonna have to have you fill out a new permit application. I can try to find the old one, would it be the same amount of materials in that original one?
It would have been, it would have been the same piles.
Okay.
And do you know roughly how much topsoil you think it might be?
I have no idea, I could probably figure it out, measure the piles and get a rough estimate.
A rough estimate.
Yeah, give us a rough estimate.
But, there's two piles there, and, but you know, there's gotta be a humongous amount of topsoil, it isn't topsoil now, the stuff coming out will be, well, it'll be like topsoil because it's got the decayed vegetation in it, cranberry leaves and stuff.
More like compost?
Well, sand, but it's kinda on the sandy side.
Okay.
And, and some of this, other, the original stuff had quite a bit of clay in it, but some of them, it used to all be, I don't know, it was all stone walls, it was a farm.
Where was this, where is it?
Right on Route 58 here in the center of town.
Oh, sure, oh, okay, yeah. Down by the body shop.
I just don't wanna start on it, I don't wanna come...
Down by which shop?
I don't wanna start on it.
Body shop, right.
All right, why don't we try to find the original paperwork, and then we'll go from there.
Also, on a, kind of a follow-up, we're looking at drafting an earth removal bylaw.
Yeah.
If we send you a draft, would you be willing to take a look at it and sort of evaluate it from your business?
I don't know who's around here, but, you know what?
Just remember, you're on TV.
You're on camera and you're on, and the mic's still live.
Okay, I'll keep it to myself.
And there's cameras back here too.
Do you have an email I can send to you?
Uh, yes, it's in all small case, Larry Hardju, L.A.R.R.Y., H.A.R.J.U.
Yep.
At Comcast dot net.
Thank you, Larry, very much for agreeing to take a look at that.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that we don't do anything that screws up the cranberry operation, obviously.
Along with, if we don't get snow in, I'm gonna be away for a few days, so...
Oh yeah, now this is, this is...
Yeah, right. Yeah, don't say your address.
Well, if we send you this, you will be able to sleep at night, because this'll put you right to sleep.
Yeah, we'll put you right to sleep.
Yeah, no, no, I had one before, and like I said, and we had one for Zeta Street too, and the reason we had it back then was to try to drum up some money because the price of berries was down to about $10 a barrel, and, but, hey, we worked our way through that, and, and we just didn't do it, so, and, but, you know, now it's, now it's just, it's gonna take all of the upland, just cover it up with a little overburden, so you won't have any place to land sand when you sand the bogs or work, so, we just like to, if we remove them, it'll probably be about the same amount, again, stacked up there, but it'll just be a different batch.
Okay.
Let's see if we can...
How about a phone number too, Larry, do you wanna write it down?
You should meet our new town administrator too, Elizabeth Denny.
So I'll try to find the old permit in the files.
And I guess we may well wanna dig out one of our new applications.
Once we find.
Do you want me to email him the application?
Actually, I've got some other names I wanted...
Thank you, very much, okay.
Okay.
So we'll be in touch, when were you hoping to get started on this?
Well, Richard, my brother's already been taking all of the grass and the stumps there because it's been there so long, there was new trees, they cut them off and took the firewood, and so we're stripping that off because you wouldn't be able to screen that or just clog everything up anyway, and then just stacking that up in a pile, let that rot again, and, you know, but...
So there's no real gravel removal, right, it's basically just some topsoil?
No, it's just, it's just the, you know, the cranberry bog, it's the top six or seven inches or whatever, they may take a little bit more because with the layers of sand, the original grade of the bog has come up from putting sand on it.
Right.
So we may take it down so we don't have to build all that back up again.
Okay.
A few more years, probably be somebody else's worry anyway, I'm 70, so...
Yeah, you're a youngster.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna retire, I'm fighting it.
So you're doing it as a bog renovation, Mr. Hardju, are you doing it as a bog reno?
What's that?
A bog renovation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or it's really just kind of maintaining the bog, you need to strip this to...
Well, you know what happens, the cranberries, some of them, if it's not picked and they fall down, especially on here when you put sand, if the seeds in those berries are able to germinate, there'll be some kind of a, it won't be a true to form, one of the varieties that gets out there, and there'll be some wild thing, and usually they don't crop good, and they're usually a stronger aggressive vine. If you go by there in the springtime, you'll see all these blotches out there, full of dark, dark blotches of the wild vines.
Okay.
And it's getting, so, it's probably a third of the, third of the bog is junk vines, so, you know, instead of getting 20 loads of cranberries out of there, you get about 12 loads, you know, and, and, you know, and it's, it used to be really nice, but it's been getting overtaken by those vines, so, you know, there's some, there's some varieties, like the late howl vines, are real strong, so it's hard to get crowded out, these are really blacks and then, and it can be, you know, it's just, it's just hard to keep them pure, so, anyway, that's what we'd like to do, and, you know, I'd like to get the blessings of the town to grow.
Okay.
We'll look into it.
All right, yeah, we'll, we'll be in touch.
All right, thank you.
See what I can find, thank you for coming in.
I wish, I don't know what was going on here, because I might have picked, I didn't know, but I need a black jacket.
We might have picked a different night, too.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Now, did we ever confirm that the gravel, the, what was it, 44 sand and gravel earth removal permit was the last one issued for the Atwood property? Have we ever confirmed that?
No, we found that old thing that Bree had dug up.
Yeah.
I think it was unclear what that was even for.
Okay.
I thought.
Okay.
Yeah, she's shaking her head.
They don't think that there was ever one.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that that may have been for some other site, but it was kind of nondescript, so...
Okay, okay, perfect, okay. So earth removal regulations, we're gonna hold that until next week, or maybe two weeks, because next week might be...
Couple things I need to say on that.
Okay.
One, I got a note from Linda Letty who couldn't be here.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Concerned that hearing some, through the grapevine around town, that people were upset thinking that this first draft that we're considering was a final draft, so she hoped that we would emphasize, which actually we did at the first meeting and at our meeting last week, but to emphasize again, this is a first draft, we want input from everyone, we are particularly concerned about existing operations, and we are particularly concerned about unintended consequences. So we are looking at a first draft, we had hoped that Brian Wick from Cape Cod Cranberry Cooperative would be here tonight, but the other thing ran long. I think we all recognize, we thought we could do this fairly quickly, it's looking considerably more complex than we thought, and I think, as we discussed last Thursday night, we are totally dedicated to getting this right. Whether we can get this done in time for town meeting, I think is pretty open to question. And, I mean, here's an example, that the sooner we get this done, the better, on the other hand, to rush this is to just...
Yeah, no, if it doesn't meet, make town meeting, it doesn't make...
It doesn't meet town meeting, exactly, it's better to have the right...
We want it right.
So not, not to belabor it, but I, we had talked about, I think, the 19th next week of inviting in, we haven't...
We had talked about it, but we also have the MRI report.
And that could go long.
It could go long.
It's gonna go long.
If we extend it to the next week, I'm okay with that, that is right at the place where the warrant is actually closing.
Okay.
And we won't even have been to town council yet for...
Okay.
But would we aim for two weeks then, for that discussion?
Why don't we go 3/26 for the gravel?
Okay, so, Mr. Hardju, we're gonna be discussing our new sin, our earth removal bylaw draft, two weeks from now, and we're inviting a bunch of ag people, anyone who might...
Be affected.
Or interested, right.
So we'd love to have you in, if you can make it. We think, it's pretty rare that, what happened earlier in the night is the way these meetings go, but we'll have also an appointment time probably to get started on that, so if you can make it, we'd love to have you.
Do you want to shoot for 6?
Sure.
All right, yeah, let's shoot for 6.
Six on the 26th.
Six o'clock on the 26th, so if you're available to come in, we're gonna be talking about the, the draft of the earth removal...
Send me an email, but I should be back.
Okay.
Unless I get snow out again from getting back in.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll send you an email.
Thank you.
About ten days, that's unbelievable.
I know, it's lousy. So I apologize to you guys, because you probably came in to do the earth removal, sorry, yeah, Brian left, so we'll talk about it again on the 26th at 6:00, the draft. And I just confirmed with Liz and Bree that we do not have a gravel removal permit for the Atwood property.
No, I, I knew you didn't, I had an idea you'd...
Okay, we've looked.
You know, it was just my point.
Okay, all right, so sorry, I can't provide you with that document, because it doesn't exist.
Right.
All right.
A lot of things happen and they just don't exist.
That's true.
We won't charge you for the entertainment, too.
So we'll see you guys on the 26th then.
Okay.
Thank you, and thanks for coming in, sorry about that. Okay, so, annual...
Excuse me, one minute.
Steve, did you want to say anything? Okay, just fly on the wall?
Okay.
Okay, all right, thanks for coming, so, the, the study is on the website, and we'll be discussing it next week, at what time? At 6:00 with MRI. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so, annual town meeting preparation, do we need to do anything with that?
Just waiting for stuff to come in.
Okay, so, just continue to work on that?
Setting up placeholders as it's coming in.
Okay.
CPC will be in tomorrow.
You are rescheduling Tara for 6:30?
Next week.
Next week? No, that's not gonna happen.
Can I put Brian, can I put Tara at 6:00 and Brian at like 6:15?
Brian's not coming now until the 26th.
Brian's not coming in, the 26th.
Before 6:00, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Yeah.
3/26.
Yeah, at 6:00.
Can we put Tara at 6:00?
Oh, and...
Why don't you and Elizabeth just figure it out?
Yeah, we'll just figure it out.
And just let everybody know.
Yeah, she can come for...
Yeah, let's do that, so, yeah, why don't we, why don't you change that?
Yeah.
Because that makes a little bit more sense.
So...
We'll email Mr. Hardju.
I'll just throw this out, are we interested in have Brian coming in next week, just because he, he did so much work on, on amending or recommendations on a draft, and use that as a first step before others come in the next week?
He wants to.
Sure.
I'd, I'd love to have him come in, and, so maybe we can give him a time...
Do you want to shoot for like 7:00 or 7:30?
This MRI is gonna be like tonight.
Oh, we already did that, we already did tonight.
So why don't we say 7:30?
7:30.
7:30 for Brian?
We'll be lucky on that.
Do you want to put 7:00 just in case, for some reason it gets done, so that he's not waiting?
As long as he's willing to wait, you know, to 7:30.
We can tell him to come later than, or to plan, but...
Don't come before 7:00.
I don't think you want to set agenda time at 7:30 if, you know, we get wrapped up early and...
Okay, okay.
All right, so, let's say 7:15, I'll invite him for that, and I'll warn him, he'll be a little late.
It could be late. Okay, all right, so, 2017 Annual Town Report, I started working on that, it was pretty interesting, kind of rehashing the year, we've...
Reveling in, in the victories of the year.
Oh, yes.
You get a draft, you know, circulated will help you.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I have a deadline for that?
I know, and I will meet your deadline.
Okay.
Thank you, chief, very much.
Do you adjourn?
Thank you.
No.
No, we have it.
No, we're still on, Kim.
Yeah, why don't you guys go out in the hall, okay, why don't we go into correspondence and then Liz can do her...
We haven't done police station, have we?
Oh, we don't have anything for that right now.
No, we, we did it, I think we did it at the top, we don't have the contract yet.
Yeah, so, don't we have to sign something?
No, no.
We don't have a contract yet.
Not tonight.
Okay. There goes the police station.
I do have, for my updates, so I'm, I'm working with Deb Anderson, just as far as getting some of the hearings set up for the zoning articles, so you voted back on the 8th to forward the moratorium article to the planning board, so I just wanted you to initial this memo, just so we have a clear timeline for the Attorney General's office, whether or not the article gets approved, I just need a paper trail for Tara and I...
Our initials?
That's fine.
Just our initials?
Just your initials is fine, this is just more for our use, just so that we have a clear paper trail. And then likewise, we received a citizen's petition article today, so same thing, I just need you, for this one, if you could take a vote, to simply forward it along to the planning board as required for zoning.
Oh, it's not a recall, it's not my recall? Okay. All right, so what is this, a citizen's petition for?
It's to change the zoning at a particular parcel.
Okay.
This is the, when you go down 106 to a Halifax, on the right-hand side, is that Carrie?
Oh, he was required to do this.
Yeah, but it's the property on the left.
It's the property on the left.
Across the street.
It's own residential agricultural, he's been putting trucks and doing work across there. We gotta make sure that, it's, it's gotta go to the town meeting.
Right, it has to go to...
He's paying for all the legal fees, so we gotta make sure...
He had to, right.
That it's done in the correct way, so we don't have to...
Okay.
It didn't look like they had an attorney put this together, but I could be mistaken.
Okay.
It was a handwritten, we just have to, we have to advertise and do it exactly as written, we cannot add to it or anything.
Ahead of time, nor at town meeting, can a citizen's petition be changed in any way.
Be amended, exactly.
So, did you vote to send it to planning board for the required public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we vote to send the citizen's petition to planning board for, for processing for town meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Wage and Personnel Board may be meeting later this week, and if so, I will be attending that, and then I'll be able to update the board.
Thank you.
For correspondence, we have a letter dated March 9th, 2018, that was signed by several members of the Plimpton Fire Department regarding continued vote of confidence in and support for Fire Chief Warren Bersari. And so that's a letter here that's written to reemphasize the continued support. We also have here, Plimpton Halifax Express, there was a very nice write-up on Silver Lake Superintendent Joy Blackwood.
Saw that.
And the Mass School Library Association naming her as a recipient of this year's Administrative Advocate Award, so it was a fantastic write-up, and I did send her a note and congratulated her on that.
Well, that was nice, that was very nice.
That's it for me.
Terrific, all right, any correspondence, oh, that's it?
That's it.
Do you have a report, any updates or reports?
My update was mainly about the zoning stuff and what...
Perfect, check and check.
Did you do one? No, we've been, we had a discussion about that.
We're not paying our bills anymore.
Yeah.
Let's have a separate discussion sometime over.
Yeah, whether or not we want to get into naming it. I left it out for a reason, just because I didn't want to half do something and half not.
Okay. All right. So dates to remember, our next meeting, we are actually meeting every Monday this month. So next weekend, or next Monday, we'll be meeting with MRI at 6:00 p.m. That's the 19th. The following week is the 26th. We'll be meeting and with the group to discuss the draft of the gravel earth removal bylaw. And then.
I didn't have 3/26 on it.
It should be on there. The whole, we're meeting every Monday in March. All right. So board schools for coming years, economic development.
No, I think we should just pass over these.
Unless there's anything to report? Okay. Anything for the public safety?
Now, we sort of hit it with the contract, the police station contract.
Okay. Anything in technology? Any new updates?
No.
Okay.
I don't know where.
All right. So we have the minutes from 2/26, 3/8, and executive session from 3/8. So I haven't, have you seen the minutes from 20, the 2/26? I don't think we've gotten those yet.
I read the minutes that Mark sent out. I was fine with those.
Me, too.
2/26, I think we did last week, didn't we? Aren't those the one I did?
We did?
We did 2/26.
Okay, thank you.
Says we did. I'm with it.
Thanks, John. Love it. All right. So make a motion that we appoint the, or.
Oh, poor kid.
Approve the minutes of March 8th for regular session as written.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that we appoint, approve the executive session minutes from March 8th as written.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Selectmen's rants and raves.
Man, I haven't even thought about what. I'm gonna pass this week. I'm just mentally tired.
Yeah. I'm pretty tired, too.
And I, I'll just, I'll combine mine because tonight was really, really hard. It's probably the hardest meeting. I, oh, no, I think back, there were a couple of them that were pretty tough. Back with the former selectman, but tonight was pretty hard. But I, I think we made some progress. And I think the rave maybe, we didn't hear much in the way of raving about the board of selectmen tonight, but we had to face a really difficult set of decisions. And I, albeit people may not agree with it or may be disappointed, I think we went about it in a thoughtful, dignified, sensitive way and did the very best we could to make good decisions.
I agree. All right. Anything else?
Done.
All right. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We are closed tomorrow, just in case.
Oh, and the townhouse is closed tomorrow due to the storm. The.
Transport station.
Transport station is closed. Has school been canceled yet?
School has been canceled, and also the library is going to go on our schedule.
Okay.
It's a day that they're scheduled for opening. And we, sorry, an emergency, snow emergency, in case. They will go on the same schedule.
So the library will be closed tomorrow as well?
Yes, spoke with them.
Okay. So all town buildings and the transport station will be closed tomorrow. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Did we get appointments within the fire department?
We did. We did. We took care of that. Yeah. Okay. All right, everybody, stay safe. Hope for the best with this storm. Yeah, keep warm and hopefully we don't lose power. Good night.
Good night.